Who was nominated by her colleagues. We'll invite Lauren to come up. Lauren spoke and did a wonderful speech at the, at, come on up at the banquet. And not necessarily going over her speech, but just to what, what drives you, what your passion, you're just, you were recognized. You can tell them what you want to, if you would like to, and just that commitment that made you nominated.
Sure. Um, is this on? Okay, you can hear me. Good. I can't hear myself. Um, thank you so much for the invitation to be here. And to be recognized by the board means, means so much to me. Um, I have been working in education. I just finished my 14th year in teaching and it's my fourth year in the district. And it brings me great joy on a daily basis to work with our young people and to try to help them locate their own passion for what they want to do with their lives and how to make their own lives happy. So it is really an incredible honor. I had no idea it was coming. I got surprised. Um, Dr. Huguenot told me that we were going to film one of my circles that I run, just like on a regular Monday morning at school. So I walked in and there's like 20 other people and like cameras and all of this kind of stuff. And it was a really, I do not like to be the center of attention at all. So that was a, that was a moment for me, a little bit of anxiety. But it was just the fact that I was nominated and supported by members of my community, by my colleagues, by the students, really means so much to me. Of course, none of us are, entered the field of education because we're looking for, you know, fame and accolades. That's not really why we do what we do, right? Um, but in such a tough year especially, it meant so much to be recognized for, for the work that, that we do. Um, and like I said in, in my speech that I gave to the, the Ann Arbor and IPCE Chamber, every single educator deserves an award like this. Every single one of us is working incredibly hard to make sure that our students are getting the best possible education that they can. And so it's, it's an honor to accept, but I also want to say that everybody deserves this kind of recognition and everyone deserves to be, you know, honored for the ways that they are showing up and showing out for our kids every single day. So thank you again. It's an honor to be here.
I was just gonna say thank you and congratulations to you again, and we appreciate all your dedication and commitment to this district.
Can you share with everyone who didn't know? Oh, I want a car. I, I wanted two-year lease from Latontine, which is pretty incredible. So that was pretty awesome. That was the moment that this, that the students freaked out when they were like, well, we have a price for you, but we couldn't fit it in the door. And they were like, oh, man, it's like, definitely, that was, that was a moment for them for certain. Everyone's like running outside. It was, it was kind of crazy. Yeah, it was pretty, pretty amazing. So that doesn't happen every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Zachary Ross, I know there are several other recognitions and I'll just.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Fardig Diab spoke about this year beyond, you can talk to educators. I was saying it this morning with our cabinet, this past year has been more challenging than any other year in education. All the educators have expressed it from where, whatever role that they lead from, they've all shared that. And as you see, Lauren was recognized for going above and beyond, even as we've come back through this pandemic recovery. These following individuals as well, even although we said let's, let's go slow to go fast, let's narrow the plate, let's not add anything else. These people continue to go above and beyond to participate in what we call MSBO certification, which is the Michigan School Business Officials Business Office Certification. And so it's called business office. However, I'd like to highlight there, there are different areas. So it's business, there's operations, there's finance, there's transportation. And so I want to recognize each one, each one of these individually. And we have more to come. As a matter of fact, we just got some additional one this past week for next month. And so even in spite of the fact that people were coming back super exhausted, these, this individual continued with, through the MSBO and received the Business Office Manager Certification. So I'd like to recognize and have her come up. Barbara Boone, many of you. Come on, Barbara. She's behind the scenes, working in the business office. Typically folks just come by and they don't know exactly where, what her role is. We see Priya Niyat, the Director at our meetings, but we don't see behind the scenes as this past weeks, they've been getting ready for the audit. We know we've had additional funds with ESRS and so many things that happened. And this individual has continued to go above and beyond to make sure that our business office works collaboratively, make sure that we are working in tandem to get our funds paid, all of our, our assets paid. And when those individuals come in, she works very collaboratively. So she has received and met all of the requirements for certification under the MSBO's voluntary certification program. And so this is a rigorous academic and professional preparation program. And so we just want to thank Barbara. And then again, how is it that you were able to do all of this? So thank you, Barbara.
I just want to say to the board and to the executive cabinet, I appreciate you guys allowing me to complete this. I enjoy doing what I do here. Thank you.
And continuing on, again, the Michigan School Business Officials, they have a certification program for Transportation Director Certification. So I'd like to invite up our Transportation Director, Ms. Kim Cersey. And just to ask, come on up, we'll give her a hand. And as she comes up, you know, again, this year, we are, when we went to our busing, our own busing instead of Durham, we had shuttle services. And so as we came back from the pandemic, we still had the same number of buses that shuttles, for shuttle services. But due to the pandemic, we couldn't offer shuttle. So them rearranging, changing, following all the laws, understanding what's required in the area of transportation, took this additional professional development to a different level of importance and as a necessity. And then on top of driving herself most days, every single morning, and she, she was originally calling me, but she, she got it down every single morning by 5:00 AM. There was cars, knowing who's, who's there, what kind of substitutes, rearranging, and then still driving almost at 6:00 PM every night. So think about that every day, not part days, every single day. And if it was snow even earlier. And on top of that, she received this recognition. So thank you for all that you've done. How is it, Ms. Cersey, that you are able to pull all of that off?
Well, first of all, Madam President, trustees and Dr. Zachary Ross, thank you for this opportunity. And thank you for entrusting me to represent the district. It has not been easy, but I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. Because it's been a journey, but I enjoy what I do as well. I really do. I enjoy what I do.
Well, thank you very much. And again, this is a rigorous, this isn't a YCS. This is a state of Michigan certification. So we just appreciate all of these staff members going above and beyond. Now, we know that the main reason why we're here is our students. And so we are today very excited to be able to recognize the 2021-22 Seal of Biliteracy recipients. We know you're going to hear more about the program a little bit later in the presentation. However, at this time, I'd like to invite the team, because there's always a team, they come together, the team up to just talk about these students and the outstanding recognition again, from the state, not just YCS, but from the state that they've received. Come on up, team. Excellent job, this EL team. Let's give them a hand.
Thanks for having us. Unfortunately, none of the students were able to attend tonight. I spoke to all of them yesterday and I'll try, I'll try, but they had to work. And so I am here in their stead. And we do have a picture of them on one of the slides that I can show you at that point when we get to it.
Do you mind sharing the recognitions and what they received?
Sure. Yep, not a problem. So each of these students came to the United States, some of them were born here, but grew up in their native country. And so they came here having to learn English when they arrived. And we have a student, we have two students from Mali that just came this past year. They speak French and English. Both are going on to college and one of them was our salutatorian this year at graduation. So that was amazing. And then we have one student, oh, two students from Honduras. One has been here a little, maybe like three years. And he is Spanish and English. Nixon was also Spanish and English. Dorian was born here, but grew up in Mexico and came back two years ago. So he is getting it for Spanish and English. And Sicolali Melissa was also born here, but grew up in Guatemala. And she is receiving it for Spanish and English. So super proud of these young people.
And I just wanted to say that, just like you talked about this being not just a YCS thing, this is the one award that the Michigan Department of Education gives to high school students, is the Seal of Biliteracy. And it's life-changing. It is, is a game changer for these students. And it is so amazing that YCS is able to do that. And I just want to talk a little bit about what they get. So they get a certificate, that's their Seal of Biliteracy certificate. They also get an actual gold seal on their diploma. They also get a letter from Superintendent Michael Rice congratulating them for that. And they get a letter from the Office of Educator Excellence as well, just talking about and recognizing what they have accomplished and what, how, how distinguished this award is. So it was, it's a, it's an amazing distinction.
You can just stand there, just wait for one sec. You can stay. So let's give our, because we wanted to pause. We know President, and our president will take us to the present, presentation sections, just to recognize these students for their outstanding achievement. And we know they could not do that without this EL team and also their wonderful teachers and payrolls and, and all those who assist. So let's give them a round of applause.
As Ms. Haynes is getting the presentation ready, the slide that has the pictures of the students, does it also have their names?
Uh, yes, just, just their first names.
Okay.
Do you have the printout that has their?
We do. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we recognize them by calling their name.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam President, are we able to talk to the presentation?
Oh, yes. I apologize. Next, that takes us to our first presentation. And we have one to, we have two presentations this evening. And the first one is our World Languages EO update.
Thank you, Madam President. And as Ms. Haynes is putting up the presentation and dimming the lights so that those in the audience can see, thank you, Dr. Lopez, who, who will be, and thanks for those of you who came and for the recognition. Thank you so much. Congratulations to each one of you. So we know Board of Education that this team has come to you last year asking for an opportunity to continue to be innovative. We know that we've been very, very careful, again, as the, we know our board subcommittee has met with this group and really ensured that we are not, again, we're going slow to go fast, we're taking things off the platter, not adding to our teachers. Our teachers have been very thoughtful about us not bringing things top-down to them. And this has come from the teachers. And they wanted you to hear some of the results of their plan. They wanted you to know what, what the progress was and how we're moving forward. And so we appreciate this team led by Dr. Lopez, but these three individuals have really put in the work. I just wanted to make sure to share. Not only do they, what, what do I mean by the work? Not only have they looked at the curriculum to bring to you to ensure that it's at this high level of rigor. They have had throughout the year, meetings with parents who are interested. They have shadowed the teachers in the program to ensure that they were successful. They ensured that we had the teachers interviewed, stringently interviewed. I went to one interview, I literally did not know what was happening because it was not in English. I just, I would, I just tried to like share my sentiments of belonging. However, this work, again, I want to emphasize, it has not come from administration down. This has been exactly how we've changed the culture in this district. It has been teacher and educator-driven. And so thank you for your work. And we can't wait to hear about what has happened and transpired since we heard about this opportunity last year.
Like back to Zachary Ross, she said it all. So all I'm going to do, introduce the wonderful team that's here. As you know, Liz Sermon serves as the person who shares the entire department of World Languages at the EL program. Mary Anne Jaeger serves as our EL. And then we have Celeste Green, who actually worked with us through one of our programs that really offers all of our programming in world language with our students as well. And I just wanted to take the time that it's wonderful to be here today. And there's Celeste, because today's her birthday and she's. Well, I'm going to pass it off to them. This is a great group to work with, high energy. And then we have adopted Daniel Young, who, who is learning Spanish like at a rigorous level. So it's just impressive.
Yes, that is so true. Thank you. Buenas noches. Good evening. Um, just as Dr. Zachary Ross said, one year ago, this team came to you to say, with this big idea, this big vision, this mission, to create a Spanish immersion program and to expand the world language offerings within the district. And with your support and your inspiration and all the, just the support that you gave us, we were able to go through this year. It was not an easy year. As you said, it was one of the toughest years that we, that has been in education, but we came through that and it was an amazing year. And the genius in those students just shines through like you wouldn't believe. We have attractive families in nearby areas because we have this programming that we have that's innovative, that's not offered in other places, especially with the ratio of kids that are native English speakers and native Spanish speakers. So it has been an amazing, amazing year. And so if you take a look at that slide there, you will see there are some pictures there. So if you see that very first picture, there's a picture of a native English-speaking kindergarten student who is leading the class in Spanish and her peers are responding to her in Spanish. And you'll see a little bit of clip of that later. And then all the way to the very end, that is the last day of the first year of our Spanish immersion program, that is kindergarten graduation. And it has been, it's been an amazing year. And we've had Spanish being added to the, all the elementary schools as well. So it has been awesome. And we'll get more into that.
So this is our pathway. We are going from pre-K immersion to attaining the Seal of Biliteracy. As we have so many English learners in the district, our EL mission is such that YCS seeks to provide every child, regardless of national origin or native language, quality and meaningful educational instruction. Consequently, students who are English learners are provided instructional services through the ELD, English Language Department Program, which is designed to meet your unique needs. All of our students at YCS will have the opportunity to achieve the Seal of Biliteracy through our innovative programs, the Spanish immersion and our expanded language offerings throughout the grade levels. Hola, como esta? And that was a great time when our superintendent joined us for that interview. So much fun. So as my past Korean students would say, it's all about connections, Mrs. Jaeger. These are our connections, okay? Powerful partnerships. Five years we've been partnered. Five years we've been partnered
There was 3.7 billion dollars.
Yeah?
The goal is get these kids prepared to take the exam, even though some of them. But not only do we prepare them to practice, practice to be there. Partners with a couple churches here in town, their facilities. Be prepared to take exams, but not only get them to take the exam, but that once. There's plenty of teams here in the county, but they're all been sick months. And we want to prepare them all so they can have a successful four-year or whatever college. Prepare for the exams, prepare and how to provide and how to probably bring all that.
And one of the things that I would like to emphasize, because this has come up. Are we trying to start a charter school? No, we're not trying to start a charter school. I've been through that system before. And, uh, you know, we don't have the luxury of spending time to try to start a charter school. So we're not competing for the district or any of the districts in the county for their students. What we want to do is be a community-based support system. You know, because the community has a role to play in supporting these students. They our student, they our kids, you know, they our future. And we need, we have a responsibility to make sure that we do whatever we can to support these students as they, as they go through this process of going from, from high school into post-secondary education. That's our responsibility as a community. And that's the philosophy that we're, uh, that we're promoting. It takes a village. That's the philosophy that we're supporting, that we're promoting.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Casey.
Yes, you may.
One more thing for me. A pair of stuff. It summarizes exactly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I take off my mask? Because I have a southern accent. First of all, my name is Roger Casey. And I am an elected delegate for Ypsilanti Township and also Alternative Democratic Delegate for the State of Michigan. As a delegate, we write resolutions. Resolutions that, uh, bring in fundings to our counties and to our area and for the whole state. One of those resolution that I introduced was ban the box. And that is to stop people getting out of prison, uh, to stop employees from discriminating against them. So the city of Ypsilanti even went a little further and would not allow anyone a contract unless they hire people that have felonies, which was a great move. But not only that, as a progressive Democrat, I introduced a resolution for substance abuse and mental illness. And it was carried on by some of my colleagues. We did that in 2015. And today, just recently, the President of the United States released it. Six point five billion dollars. This is for substance abuse and mental illness. And the reason I mention mental illness just as well. Twenty-five years ago, my oldest boy, Eugene, went to this. Not at this school, but he had a learning disability. Because as a child, and many of y'all know that, remember that. They were saying, yeah, lead poisoning. And they were saying the kids was eating chips. Chips like they eat a bag of potato chips off the wall, bang. And come to find out, it was not chips on the wall. Some of it was. But many of them built before World War II, housing built before World War II, had lead pipes in it. And my son, and it affected him so bad that he didn't graduate. He eventually, of course, got into drugs, committed willy-nillies, and then tried to become a family man and found out he couldn't get an apartment or a job. And he committed suicide. So the reason I'm explaining this because I know many of y'all are paying. You have lost many students, you know. And as a state representative, I intend to bring these funds in. Not only for substance abuse and mental illness, but the effect and the damage it has caused on all community members, including the school. I'm also fighting for the PFAs in the river. Because guess what? You gonna have some PFAs skied in the next five, 10 years. Okay, and no telling what kind of effect it gonna have to me besides ADD and the rest of them. So I intend on bringing funds not just for housing, uh, and other issues that drugs and substance abuse have affected. All right, I want to make sure that we train our teachers to be prepared for these kids this coming. Because I do not want to lose any more kids in my district to suicidal drugs. Not only that, I want to put up a recreation center. I want to, uh, raise up the job, the job, and close the welfare gap to today's index, which will be $26 an hour. All right, and then just right as we speak, we have drafted up a resolution to submit to the state party to pardon the Ypsilanti school board for their debt. So you can move on. We are drafting this, whether we pass it directly to the governor or whether we run it through the party, but you got to do something. You can't leave our schools. Y'all have consolidated. You have did everything necessary to settle this debt. Now, we got seven billion dollars. If you all want to own a partner, pay it off, okay? We want to utilize that seven billion dollars left to pay off our debt. But not only pay off our debt, give us more money so we can have still programs and programs you talking about to advance our kids to catch up with the rest of the world. So as a, a, a state representative, this is just a few of the things I want to do. But I can't do it without your help. Now, whether you endorse someone already, well, that's cool. But I still gonna need your support. And if you have an endorsement, I'm asking for your endorsement now. I've been a community activist for many years. I've been in the party for over 15 years. I've been elected five times as your delegate. So I'm not no stranger. I'm experienced. I have idea what to do. And I'm genuine. I came up here 45 years, got kids and have great kids now. Great, great kids, get ready to join. So be prepared. But then I'd like to thank you very much. And I thank you, Madam President and Madam Superintendent, for allowing me to speak to the rest of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Next, that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Vice President Lee, I move that the Board of Education approve the one, June 20, 2022. The Board meeting managed to pursue the matter as per the presented list. And it's 6/29/22, you have the motion and the time.
Thank you. A motion was made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion? Thank you, supported by Trustee Fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to our first action item for this evening. And that is the approval of our annual instructional material. Is there a motion at this time?
Here's what I found.
Okay, so sorry. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, this is Trustee Goodrich. I move that the Board of Education approve the one, imagine learning quote, number 265237 for a purchase amount of $129,000, $129,400. Two, eliminate education quote, number Q dash 137752 for a purchase amount of $25,553.74. Three, elevate K-12 quote for a purchase amount of $101,800. Four, NWEA quote, number 00053959 for a purchase amount of $38,525. Five, Edmonton-APEX learning course quote, number Q dash 436734 for a purchase amount of $108,000. Six, H professional services quote, number 008421850 for a purchase amount of $109,600. Seven, HMH MRIR assessment three-year subscription quote, number 008410052 for a purchase amount of $45,873.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Goodrich. Is there support for this motion?
Uh, support, Trustee Gainsley?
Supported by Trustee Gainsley. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the educational program contracts. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, this is Trustee Gainsley. I move that the Board of Education approve the educational program contracts as presented.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Gainsley. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Trustee Goodrich?
Supported by Trustee Goodrich. Any discussion on this item?
Um, I took a little background on, I assume these are two separate things and not related? Or are they related?
It is related in the way that it aligns with our curriculum, Dr. Lopez. Thank you for the question.
Yes, good evening. It is related for, it meets the needs of my camp and our goal. And we have set for literacy and numeracy. If you have questions about any particular.
How, how, how do you stream, like the, how we're adding to roadmaps, our H major and what the teacher's development and then the ISD?
So coming this fall, um, one of the things that we've been working on, there's a team right now working of teachers that are in grades three, four, and five. A lot of the teachers are from Wise and other schools. And they're working very, very hard in creating this platform, which is the roadmap. And basically, our curriculum, as you know, H major's all over the place, it has a lot of content. But we have streamlined it to be a very student-focused. So in essence, then we have all these pieces that we break down, what the teachers could do and how they could, the platform will allow the teachers to assign the assignments to students that can work independently and work collectively in the classroom. They have more of, what is it, the gist of the curriculum and very completely aligned. It's hopefully during the retreat, we'll be able to share a little bit so you can see it for yourself and you see how amazing this tool is. Teachers who are creating it right now, you know, Alina always talks about people support what they help to create. And our staff is creating, the people who are creating right now are like bought into it. This is what the tool that they will use in the fall to roll out. And we're going to be piloting in grades three, four, and five with everybody who teaches those grade level in the fall. And it's really very comprehensive and just aligned. So the piece here is the work that we're doing during the summer as well as the work that we will do for the 22, 23 school year to continue to support our teachers. Because eventually during this platform, we will be able to add the math, science, social study. And really, the lesson plans are already completed. It is so comprehensive, you're going to be very impressed when you see it.
And it connects with the second part, because they've used the book, you've heard us talk about Dr. Goldie Mohammed, Cultivating the Genius. And so they've connected all of our ELA lesson plans with the Goldie Mohammed lesson plan template. And they've connected the FDPs throughout every lesson. And so teachers have been doing that even without the platform. The platform just makes it electronic, they can log on, it's one place versus they have to pick up a tool, they have to click on and click on. They want it, especially with us having so many teachers, teacher turnover. The students don't lose out because the teacher becomes new. It's, they've created, they've gotten the essential questions. They've connected all of those highlighted pieces that you would have had to go through all of the HMH training. And they've made it more comprehensive. And they want to use the, we had a pilot program using roadmaps, but they want to make it more robust. So that it literally is what grade three through five invest, that lesson plans that they've been creating. And then that cultivating the genius piece through teacher action research will provide those people even more support through the ISD. So this is additional support and training to make sure that our lessons are culturally relevant.
So the second part is basically a partnership that we will contract the 10% of Melissa Brooks' ships from the ISD. She will be in our district for half a day every week for the rest of the year. And she'll be able to work with our staff and between 50 to 75, this is volunteer, it's not forcing anybody. But this teacher action research around culture diverse practices that really is enhancing literacy, the literacy essentials, as well as other components that they take. So teachers will be able to utilize this to demonstrate student growth, you know, throughout the year. So the teachers are really driving the learning. And I don't know, I'm so aesthetic because I've been trying to do this so long, you know, all these other districts. And finally, I get to do it in YPSY and I'm excited about this work. Also, as you notice, we, Dr. Kathy Piescher from EMU will be working with us as well. Because she really leads, at the state level, leads the, you know, the whole teacher action piece. And then we'll be working with Cornelius Minor, who is, who wrote, who's the author, We Got This. And I have gone through a couple of workshops, bit of depth. And just note that it's high quality and it's volunteer. But I know that every teacher in this district want to jump in this.
Thank you. I, Trustee Goodrich and I actually went to a presentation about the collaborative platform at the MASB conference and were really excited about it. It seemed really impressive and worked with Melissa Brooks and Kathy Piescher. So thank you for helping me understand how those pieces fit together. It was like, you've got all the good ingredients, so I'm really excited about the program. Um, and maybe the entire board, but I know at least me personally, I would love, once you've implemented this, to kind of love to dive in and see what you're creating.
You're gonna love it. I think Alina also mentioned the whole perspective of Goldie Mohammed's applied pursuit. So, you know, it's the identity, skill, intellect, criticality, and joy. Those are, we have a team embedding, doing this deep work, dive right now, creating all those. It's just impressive, the work that's being led by our instructional coaches with our teachers in this space. And you're gonna be very impressed, the quality of culture responsive in relation to the text. They're actually looking at the essential questions of our, even our curriculum to make it more culturally responsive. And it's just impressive videos and it's just like, can't wait to roll it out.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Before Dr. Lopez leaves, any other board questions, discussion? Thank you so much. A motion was made by Trustee Gainsley, supported by Trustee Goodrich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to our action item under human resources, the approval of the Reed Willis Company contract. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Trustee Thompson, I move that the Board of Education approve the Reed Willis Company contract as presented.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Thompson. Is there support for this motion? Thank you, supported by Trustee Fields. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to action item under business and finance. The acceptance of the YMCA EMU room number 107 and 110 chapel lease. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Trustee Gainsley, I move that the Board of Education accept the YMCA EMU room 107 and 110 chapel lease for September 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Gainsley. Is there support for this motion?
Trustee Thompson, support.
Thank you, supported by Trustee Thompson. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the Ypsilanti Community High School pool restoration change order from Honeywell. Is there a motion at this time?
Yes, I have a question. The dollars are blank here.
What is the change order? Because I'm looking at it, I had it in the.
Total will be 1.345.
Is that correct?
Could you repeat that, Trustee Thompson?
It looked like, um, 1,345,800, is that correct?
I think it's, yeah, over 1.3, 1.345, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't click my link. Yeah.
Okay, so the amount is 1.345. Thank you. Yeah, we can, um, is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education accept the change order in the amount of $1,345,000 for the phase two portion of the White Beach Chapel restoration.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Goodrich. Is there support for this motion? Thank you, supported by Trustee Fields. Discussion, Trustee Thompson.
So I just want to clarify, I see that it says the contract sum will increase by that amount. But then the, it says with that increase, it will now be $4,182,485,000. So do we need to vote on that amount total? Or are we just voting on the increase? The board voted on the original estimate for this project about two years ago. And I guess, you could come to the mic too. And so this, as they've been working on the project, we're seeing additional opportunities to do work right now. And so the change order would be necessary to be able to see the overall, actually, long-range savings.
Yeah, so the change order that we're asking for now is the final phase to complete the restoration of the pool. The original was, uh, one, one million, I believe, is the change. And the first, that was the mechanical. And we knew at that time that we needed to divide that out. So this is the second change order with the final phase of the pool. So everything above deck. So we have your lessons on, on the others, just asking for the final change order of 1.345.
And this is the pool at the high school?
This is the high school, Ypsilanti Community High School. You hardly recognize that one and stuff.
Other board questions or comments? So just to clarify, this is only for the phase two part. When he first gave the overall scope, we went phase one only for approval. Now, this is that phase two. And, and the talking about the savings is going through that third part, the Honeywell. Were you able to see some of the savings? Do you want to speak on that, Mr.?
Yeah, so as everything that the pandemic brought us, and also brought us an increase in this scope of work. So we were closely with Honeywell to find places that we could reduce costs as labor and material costs, specifically the stainless steel that comes from, right? So our stainless steel gutter system was impacted pricing as well. So we went back, looked at, so Honeywell was really great partners to work with. So they allowed us to take on some of that scope, so we reduced costs and realized some savings where we could work directly with the contractors, so didn't have to pass through Honeywell. So they were great in doing that as well. So the two things that were reduced or removed from this scope in full transparency is ceiling work. And what we found is that we were able to reduce the scope tremendously because the first time that was built, it was done right. And it was done with the correct tiles that will hold up in that, in that environment. And it's evident as the conditions of the, of them today. And then the only other additional scope is some programming that will be required to connect our automated systems to the new monter boiler and the pool boiler that will be installed in this scope.
Director Rose, while you're here, I know the board has had persons coming and saying timeline, timeline. They've spoken at the board meetings, can you help them to see phase one, complete timeline, now what would this mean?
Yeah, so we were able to stay real close to our timelines downstairs with the exception of a few pieces that took time to come in. We extended our timelines in this one intentionally to go back and re-engineer, or engineer rather, the RFP so that we could go back a second time to look for more competitive bids. The first one wasn't engineered down to the details that would allow a contractor to come in and know their risks upfront. So a lot of those proposals were padded for that risk. And we recognized that, Honeywell recognized that, went back to the table, engineered those specs so that they were much more specific and could inform both us as the, as the, the person paying for the contract, but also the person that would be bidding that contract. So those came back and did prove to help to offset. Even though the bids came back higher, it was reflective of the cost of the material. So we were still able to stay competitive. We came in at 1.345, we're originally back. When we first scoped this workout, we were thinking we would come in at about 1.1, just under 1.2. So we're, we're real happy where we're at. And excited that we have, you know, a sinking fund and the support of our community to do this work. So it's a long, a lot of splashings for a long time. Question? Those are guaranteed, yes.
But reality, we say 64,831.
Yeah, so.
Now, in phase two.
We always like a little more frosting on our cake, that's right, we won't complain about that. I'm always a corny guy, I think it's frosting.
All right, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Rose. Again, a motion was made by Trustee Goodrich and supported by Trustee Fields. Is that accurate? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the resolution to add the additional premeals to cover the Headley rollback for the November 2022. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the resolution to add the additional three mills to cover the Headley rollback for the November 2022 election. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, this is trustee Goodrich. I move that the Board of Education accept, as presented, the resolution to add the additional three mills to cover the Headley rollback for the November 2022 election.
Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Goodrich. Is there support for this motion? Supported by trustee Fields, thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Could we get, I know we covered this in a lot of detail last time, but could we get just a brief overview of what we're doing here and why we need to do it now?
Thank you. Yes, the snack was already ready for me.
So we put on the ballot in the last August, last March month for the 18 mills and 0.5 mills. We did that because of our year of summer collection. We needed that additional 0.5 mills to collect this summer. When the numbers came out for the Headley rollback, they are more this year. So we are already using the entire 0.5 mills that we asked for. If it continues to go in that direction, the next year we are already seeing like if we will need like 0.03 mills. The year after that, further more. The year after that, further more. So that's why we did the calculation for the next three years, and we are seeing that we will need up to three mills to make us a whole. The voters approved the 18 mills, but every time, every year when the Headley rollback comes, we lose that village, and these three mills will make us whole. It just gives us the, we'll get the entire operating, operational dollars, local operational dollars of 18 mills, not 17.65, 17.75 like that.
Can you share what that means for taxpayers? What would that mean for the public? Sometimes they're trying to understand the Headley rollback. They think, oh, that's going to be more for me. Can you explain?
Absolutely. It's not an increase. It's not additional for the taxpayers. Taxpayers have voted for 18 mills. We are absolutely very thankful for that. It's the same thing. It just makes the district a whole. District is eligible to collect that 18 mills, not any more.
Any other board questions? Yes, trustee Gainesley?
So I guess I'm curious why this was not included in our May proposal. Like, did we not know that this was coming, and our district put a pretty significant amount of effort into getting that passed in May? And so to come back this quickly with another item is surprising.
No, we knew this was coming. We would need additional mill, village for the, to make the district whole for 18 mills. But by law, we can only put additional 0.5 mills on the ballot.
So we had anticipated this because we'd have a significant Headley reduction.
Yes, but when you put for the 18 village, along with that, you can only put 0.5 mills.
Okay. Thanks, State of Michigan.
Yes, trustee Thompson.
So my question is, are we doing something similar, like what we did in May, for the public to understand what this exactly means? I mean, as an average person, probably, it's like a double dip, and they're saying something like that. And so my concern is how are we going to explain this? And how can we need to do this simplified?
Absolutely. So once I receive, the reason that it is coming to the board this July board meeting, because there is a deadline for us to put things on the ballot for November election, the deadline is in August. So I wanted to get the consent and approval of the board. Once we receive that, I'll work with the executive team. I'll work with Alexander for marketing, and we will come up with similar, how we did for the initial 18 mills, and make sure that our community understands, no, we are not double dipping. It is just to make on the district whole.
And my other question is, is it possible for us to have this absentee ballot as well?
That's the goal.
And I just want to remind the board that this part isn't new. What's new is we're trying to communicate and bring it to the board in a proper and timely way. It's been going out, and it just has not been through the correct cycle. So I appreciate Ms. Nyack making sure the board is informed, making sure the public is informed. I know you saw in the paper what about the mill. I mean, it's goals to every district, but I think people go around, and we're trying to make sure we're proactive, we're being transparent upfront, and bringing it every single time. And so this, hopefully, this will help educate our public and say, oh, this is just like when we do, we're borrowing from the state every year. Like, just putting it in front and saying, here's what's happening, here's where we are, and what does this mean? As trustee Thompson talked about, for the voters, and as trustee Gainesley asked, why is it? Well, because we can only do 0.5. I think we have to educate our public and be transparent. I think districts, I think that's why when it goes on the ballot, people don't know what's happening, because we're not talking about it enough.
I have a small suggestion. Obviously, lawyers are going to have a final say, but I would love it if there was a possibility to include a very short sentence that clearly says this is not a tax increase in our ballot.
Yes, yes. If you look at the proposed language that the lawyers have sent us, that has that word, that it is only to make the district whole in the 18 mills.
Yeah, I might not be here in August to approve. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely.
Any other board questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Nyack.
Thank you.
Madam President, would this be inappropriate, please, to add the additional action item?
Yes, we still have to vote on this.
Oh, sorry. Nope, that's okay.
Just to recap, a motion was made by trustee Goodrich, supported by trustee Fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, this will be item D. Thank you, trustee Gainesley, which is the AATA 2022 village that was brought to our attention, and all of us had a resolution in front of us. Essentially, this resolution and is going to be on the ballot in August is to approve the transportation services on the east side of Washtenaw County. Trustee Gainesley, would you like to say anymore about this resolution, and would you be so kind to me?
I will. Thank you so much, Madam President, and I really appreciate your support in helping getting this on the agenda. I, you know, realized that this was our only meeting in July, and so this is kind of an important opportunity. So the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority is going to have a village, has a village on the August ballot. It is for the full authority. So the authority includes the city of Ypsilanti, the city of Ann Arbor, and Ypsilanti Township. Those three entities came together to form the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority in 2014. There was a village then, a renewal in 2018, and then this is a renewal and increase. The things that would happen because of that increase are, you know, listed kind of mostly in that second-to-last point on this resolution. So things like expanding existing services, so adding more weekend and evening hours to our buses, adding an express route between Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. So if you are trying to commute by bus from, you know, from the Willow Run area, and you're trying to get to Ann Arbor, that piece in the middle is really important and helps reduce your time. So that's going to be a significant reduction in how long it takes if you wanted to get into a job to a different, in a different part of the county. And then probably one of the biggest pieces is that they're going to expand the services, expand it and really continue, because as our county ages, services for seniors and people with disabilities, there's just a larger population. And so those services are getting more expensive, and that's one of the things that's really critical to cover in this village. So I would like to ask tonight for the Board's support of this village. And if it's okay, I can read the resolution in support, and then we can have a discussion about that, if that's all right.
Yes, I just have one question. So I know that in the final, at the end of the resolution, is to include services on the east side of Washtenaw County, and, but it is also to make sure that services are enhanced and increased from Ann Arbor to Ypsilanti. So that isn't to say that services are going to improve necessarily in Ann Arbor, it's just going to improve between what the beneficiaries are.
Yeah, the beneficiaries, it's an authority-wide village, so the beneficiaries are across the entire authority. When I was writing this village, and this is just me writing it, so if we want to change it, that's fine, was to, we encourage local residents to vote yes, and support efforts to improve services on the east side of Ypsilanti. So I guess I saw those as two separate clauses. We would also, you know, continue to engage with the authority in terms of, you know, these are places that we know our students need to go, and, you know, I know that we've had conversations like that. So in addition to supporting it, we also support efforts to improve on the east side. I forgot to mention that one of the other big pieces of this village is a, specific to the east side of Ypsilanti, is a renovation of the Ypsilanti Transit Center, which has been a long time coming. I can find you a reference there. So there would be a renovation of the Ypsilanti Transit Center, but a really critical piece of that is that there would be a staff member at that center. So it would actually be staff. Right now, if you want to get qualified either for low income or as a senior, as a person with a disability, and you want to get qualified for a discounted card, you have to go all the way to Ann Arbor to get qualified for that card, right? So this is really, really huge, because it's a major improvement to that service on the east side of the county, so that folks can go ahead and get that card right there in the Ypsilanti Transit Center. It, that, you know, I don't know what the timeline is, but that is one of the key pieces of this village, and it's a five-year village. So I think it would be, I know that the, I know that the authority has gotten some grant funding, and are hoping to have this funding to sort of match that. They are not talking about increasing the fare. So that was a really specific part of this, is that they did not want to have any fare increases, because obviously fare increases fall harder on people who have the lowest incomes. So this, this is a tax change, but it is not, that's based on your property value. So if you have a more expensive property, you would pay a little more, but it is not a fare increase, and that is not being discussed. That was, as part of passing the resolution for this, there was some discussion over whether a fare increase made sense, and the board chose not to include that in their planning, and not to, to specifically not, not put a fare increase in their financials for the next several years. They did. I could give you more details. I don't, that's as much as I know. Appreciate your.
Do you know, just, and I know that these are a lot of questions coming to you specifically, and if you can't answer it, that's totally fine. Do you know what percentage, and the reason I'm asking this question is because I know that we have this equity plan in our program, and I know there's lots of discussions about, you know, improving access to services, and a big push for the eastern side of Washtenaw County. And I want to, I guess, understand better and be certain that language. Like, what percentage, because if this county, why do they service this class? What is that plus that's being devoted in terms of resources to the eastern side of Washtenaw County? And I wonder if you can't answer that, if they, because I got something about it, yeah, but I can't recall what was actually there. But I am curious what percentage I need, and it might not be a percentage. How many resources actually are being allocated to Washtenaw County because of the resolution? It all goes through, though, there are some dedicated resources, but if it's kind of like an add-on, or, no, this is going to be entire county. I just want to make sure that we're supporting something, and we're clear that the resources are being devoted to the eastern side of Washtenaw County by way of this particular amount or this percentage. And I just don't have.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I don't have, I can't give you a specific percentage. I certainly don't have that in front of me, but I would be happy to connect you to the ride and have them get back to you with some of that information. I will say that this proposal covers all three entities, so it covers Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, and Ypsilanti Township. And so the funding, all of the funding is collected from those three entities. All of the funding is spent back in those three entities together. And this is the only, for Ypsilanti and Ypsilanti Township, this village is the only funding that they are, actually, this is not true. Ypsilanti has an additional village, I think, the city. So, but this is the funding that they put into the authority, is through this collective entity village. And so it is, you know, it is being used for evening and weekend service throughout the entire service area, because, you know, obviously with transit, you have to get from one place to another. It's not very useful if transit only goes to one place. So, you know, it does cover the entire area. I will, yeah, additionally say that I know that with capital improvements, the Ypsilanti Transit Center is the main focus of those capital improvements. And then they are also increasing night ride services, so that the nighttime taxi service also covers more of Ypsilanti. And so, yeah, so I believe it's, I haven't looked at the specific percentages in this current plan. I know I looked at it in 14, and it's fairly proportionally laid out in terms of, you know, the board has priorities in terms of like increasing ridership. Well, Ypsilanti and the east side of the county are heavy riders, and so we have a lot more buses here, because people ride them a lot, and we need them. So, you know, those kinds of things are taken into account in the plan to provide the best service to the entire authority area.
Thank you so much, trustee Gainesley. That is very helpful. And my last question, and you can probably just send this to me later, but I also am wondering, so I'm really, really intentional about our equity, so when I hear Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti and Ypsilanti Township, equity to me means that, like, that's not a tie that you just kind of evenly run, because there are resources on this side of the county. So from an equity point, I am wondering, are the resources being allocated in a way that recognize the needs? Because the needs are higher in one segment of the county. And you don't have to answer that now, at all, which is at that point.
Yeah. I'd be happy to, yeah, get some answers. I know, I will say, for what it's worth, that when, when I was on the Ann Arbor Transportation Authority Board, which was before I joined this board, so four years ago, I left. But, but putting in those equity-based policies and really focusing on some of those ridership goals were key things that we put in place at that time. And that board at that time actually also switched over to policy governance, which is a structure where it's like, these are the policies, these are the goals that we're setting you to meet. So as opposed to passing a resolution and saying, we believe in equity, it was really written in every single step into the policy that we wrote from scratch, which the authority is still governed by. So I think that we have made a lot of strides to, you know, ensuring that equity, and in particular, you know, there are federal rules about how, if you're going to cut a bus route, you have to look at the racial and income makeup of the people who use that bus route, and make sure that you're not doing it in an unfair way. And I believe the authority goes above and beyond in terms of those decisions to make sure that those decisions are made in an equitable way. But I can certainly get you more information.
Thank you so much, trustee Gainesley.
So the way, the way that's, the way the authority is set up, if you know, given the way property values are distributed within the entities that are served by the authority, it seems like, like, if the township ends up being proportionally beneficiary, is, you know, if there's hard numbers on that, or, I mean, yeah, I was anticipating that. So I brought those in today, because I think the mailer that you were referring to is really a concern about the tax increase. And I absolutely understand that there is, you know, that tax increases are concerning, and they're, you know, have a potential to be provided, you know, cause inequitable situations, which, you know, I think we're particularly sensitive to. Because of the property values in the area, so the average Ypsilanti resident would have an increase of $164 per year. Average Ypsilanti Township resident, $181 per year. The average Ann Arbor resident is about $450 per year. So there's a significant difference in the amount that we're taxed at the flat rate across the entire authority, but Ann Arbor has much, much higher property values. There is a lot of funding that's coming from those, you know, million and a half.
But Ann Arbor has much, much higher property values. There is a lot of funding that's coming from those, you know, million, half million dollar homes. Um, that is then applied equitably across the entire county. Um, so it is, you know, a progressive tax in that, in that way.
Thank you for that additional information.
Yeah.
Other, other more questions or comments? Um, and this is a resolution that's.
I have a question. Sure. So when we talk about equity, um, in this resolution, this is, it talks about ACE. But maybe, I don't know, district administrators can tell us this or can tell us this. So with Ann Arbor, when they had a influx of students shifting to that district, they of course were not, they were not able to provide buses to all of those locations. And those students received either a major discount, AATA, or a free school bus pass. I mean, a school to ride the bus for free. I don't believe if Ypsilanti was afforded that opportunity, when we say we want to expand services, is that taken into consideration or is that something that's been bought from now? Cause we have areas where students may live and they want to come to YCS, but we don't provide busing in those areas. I don't know. Is that something that's already in place or no?
Any, any entity can purchase passes essentially from the ride. Um, so those passes were not given to Ann Arbor Public Schools. Ann Arbor Public Schools purchased, um, a bulk, well, you know, amount of, um, monthly and, and long-term passes, the same way as the University of Michigan. When you get your M card, you swipe it on the bus, you get to ride the bus for free. Um, the University of Michigan actually pays for every single one of those swipes. And there's a formula that goes into it in terms of like, here's how much a fare would cost. And, you know, X percent of your people are, uh, you know, if you're, if you're under seventeen, you get a discounted rate. It's, I think, seventy-five cents as opposed to a dollar fifty per ride. And so it's less expensive for a school, public school district, because the vast majority of your riders are seventeen and under. And so they all get that student fare. Um, you know, so there's, there's a formula that basically takes into account who are the people who are riding under this pass. Um, and that I think there's something like a ten percent discount that's, that's built into that. Uh, and so they are actually paying for, for every, every single time that somebody is, um, using the bus. And I believe that we are doing the same thing for ACE students.
So, uh, any students who goes to YCS can, can ride on our buses. That any resident, wherever they live, they can go to whatever school. For ACE in particular, because they come to school different hours, they work, they are point two-five to, uh, to one point O FTE. They're not on the district bus, our district buses, because it, they're so individualized. So they receive bus cards. We do purchase them. Um, we work with, um, Ms. Nyad and the school to look at, okay, here are how many blocks of, we were purchasing way too many at first. So how many blocks any student who needs a bus card at ACE receives it.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? I know that we do, this is our only meeting in July, so this is a time-sensitive item. Um, so, would you like to, uh, we would have to.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to, I think mainly bring this in front of the board at this time, um, use this as an education opportunity and give you folks a chance to answer questions. I would love it if we could pass this resolution and actually, um, you know, as, as a board, clear our support. Obviously the school system can't, but we as a board can, um, you know, say, we think this is a good idea. We support this transit village, um, as a board together. And so, um, you know, if it is the will of the board, I would, would love to, you know, propose it and, and, uh, vote on it. And if it isn't, that's okay too.
Yes, I mean, I think I, I, I have lots of questions, but it doesn't mean that I don't support it. I just, you know.
Yeah.
Provide that. Um, so is the, is this, is this, is this a board that we, I know that you raised some concerns by President Lee about not supporting it. Um, are there any other board concerns?
Okay, all right. Um, so I would like to introduce a motion, um, in support, a resolution in support of the Ann Arbor, uh, area. Sorry, Transportation Authority 2022 Village. Um, whereas many YCS students and their families rely on public transportation to access school, work, healthcare, recreation and worship. And whereas the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority has been committed to the provision of sustainable, effective public transportation options within the Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area for many decades. And whereas an improved public transit system would help our district and our region attract and retain staff members and families by supporting economic development and job growth while also making our community accessible to all. And whereas local public transit services are critical for seniors and people with disability to maintain independence and mobility. And whereas YCS students at ACE in particular rely on public transit services, I missed a word there, sorry. Uh, rely on public transit services, uh, to reach their school with the flexibility and reliability necessary for those students to be successful. And whereas the ride is proposing to enhance and expand its existing services by adding additional night and weekend service, increasing the speed and frequency of connections between Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, and offering additional resources for mobility programs and seniors with disability. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Ypsilanti Community Schools supports the need for fast, reliable, high-quality transportation options for our community. We urge local residents to vote yes on the AAAT-A public transit ballot proposal in August 2022 and support the ride in its efforts to improve service on the east side of Washtenaw County.
Thank you. Would you like to like hold a motion at this time?
I would like to move that, and I so.
A motion was made by Trustee Gainesley in support of the resolution, uh, for the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority 2022 Village. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Trustee Goodrich?
Supported by Trustee Goodrich. All those in favor? Okay. Trustee Goodrich, could you do the board call vote please?
Certainly. Okay. Trustee Field?
Aye.
Vice President Lee?
Aye.
Trustee Gainesley?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Townsend?
Aye.
I vote aye. Uh, President Hopkin?
Aye.
Motion passed five one. Thank you for bringing this forward, Trustee Gainesley.
Thank you.
Your time tonight.
Thank you all for your time tonight. Oh, yes.
Uh, next, thank you. Takes us to our second public private portion for this evening. And we have Jesse Miller and then Amanda Smith.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Jesse Miller. Hello. Is all right? I'll remove my mask. Uh, I am the appointee to the AAAA Board of Directors, our Service Secretary, just kind of the vice chair position. Um, I'm the appointee at City of Ypsilanti and I wanted to thank you for your endorsement. This village really, uh, and so I should say I'm not here as representative of the board. Um, I'm here as someone working on the campaign as, and as a public transit advocate. And it merely means a lot to have the, um, the support of this body. I ride the bus every day. I ride with YCS students. Uh, in fact, I helped out some kids on my trip home, uh, from work today. They were, uh, trying to figure out how to get from Ann Arbor to the high school and they were taking the floor, which doesn't go by the high school. So I told, all right, get off at Hewitt, just walk a block up. Um, so this really is incredibly valuable service. And what we're aiming to do is a real transformational change that is going to allow people to have a choice about whether or not they have a car. Right now, a lot of people don't have a choice. And I really want to just express my thanks for taking this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and we have Amanda Smith.
Hi, friends. Good to see you as always. Um, when we started talking about AATA, um, I sent Jesse a message because I wanted you to hear from him directly. He had actual questions about what was going on. And I really appreciate that you passed that, um, uh, my gosh, what is it called? Resolution. Thank you very much. Um, because something that this board has done consistently is advocate for the people in our community. And I've noticed that there are a few people, um, in our township representation that are choosing to disenfranchise the students at YCS and the people in our community here. So passing a progressive village like this one, that's going to have a higher tax rate on people who have bigger houses and lower tax rate on people who are not homeowners or not, don't have bigger houses and is ultimately going to benefit people who are working, people who might work a night shift and need to ride home on a regular basis. Um, that is completely aligned with everything that this board has stood for in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports at this time? Zena? Board comments? Yes, Trustee Goodrich?
Just have a really quick one. I think we all received an email through MASB about the annual leadership conference. It was such a pleasure to get to attend and learn with so many of you last year. And I'm sure we'll have a great team learning together in our district this year as well.
Thank you. Other board comments? Dr. Daphne Rolle?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, first, just, I'm looking forward to the Board of Education retreat on the thirteenth and fourteenth. We know that the dates, as we talked about, everybody isn't able to attend. And we understand, we'll make sure everyone receives all of the information. If you're not able to attend the whole thing, uh, we provide it. We will be posted. We have to post it because it'll be still the majority. But obviously most board workshops and retreats, people don't come to. So we do want you to know it will be posted per usual. So that's why I wanted to make sure too, in the public body, like, what is this about? Is it something that needs to go to? Um, we gave you just a brief today, uh, just the agenda of where to go, what times, what location. Um, if there's questions, please, you have my, my number, cell phone number. Julie Haynes will be there to be able to assist. And we just hope you can participate. It's not only, um, to continue like the vision, but, and to answer some of those questions that we had, our board members had about data. So there'll be a data portion. There's going to be, the first part is a scavenger hunt. And it's at Greenfield Village to be able to have that learning experience. You talked about the MASB conference. To have it outside of just the board meeting is, is, you talk about the eight member team, that team piece, making connections. Dr. Lopez has gotten some little questions and as it go, go through to make the connections to YCS, to the work that we're doing, taking us back in history, but then moving us forward to be able to really see how we can progress. The next day, really working on, um, first self with the, a choice map in terms of, as, there's a lot of questions that come and public comment and things. So a way to think, um, and ask questions is a, a choice map that connects to our work with, um, cognitive coaching and adaptive schools. Then moving to that seven norms of collaboration. You hear us talking about it today. We did some of that, uh, advanced work as we talked about, even opening day, we used a protocol. We had our norms, the CE, the topic happens to still be up behind the scenes. So it's not, just so the board knows, kind of like our process and thinking that happens in all of our buildings. And it just is really great work. I know some of you have already had some of that training. Then we'll move into using that self piece with the choice map, the collaboration piece with the we map. And then moving forward to now, how do we look at data in that way? And then having that wrap up in closing. So really looking forward to that time together. Um, and if there's questions, happy to help. We just wanted you to at least have the, where do I go, what times, what's going? So if you can't do it all, what pieces you might make a choice to attend. Um, next, in the district newsletter, there was just a lot. There's a lot going on this summer. So we welcomed our, uh, Mr. Sean Fisher, that you all approved, and Ms. Casey Corbin. They're here. Um, they've, we've switched some offices so that people know, the board members, you know, the offices have been switched and reminded that this is part of that work with the CE grant. The US Department of Ed has been, on one hand, one great partner. And on the other hand, there's other things that as we've been doing amendments and things, they, just this past week, they were like, well, yeah, but please plan on that answer being no. We're like, oh, Dr. Coscarella wrote back, he said, he was, wow, this is disappointing. Thank you for letting us know in advance. And so it is really important that we implement all those pieces that I know sometimes the folks see, well, there's no folk, no people. And how are we spending money? We need to spend according to that grant so that, this is why they, they want us to have that support to implement the way that they like to see it. So just reminder, that's why those people are there. We wanted to be transparent in the newsletter so that people don't see, there's new administrators, not just spending. We're using it and we're using it appropriately according to the US Department of Ed. We want to thank those people who've helped with boots on the ground. It was a wonderful event. We saw a, a series of events. We've seen it in the newspaper, which I appreciate the news taking on a positive thing. The YCS is doing special things to our partners from EMU, Washtenaw Community College, the Ypsilanti District Library and Motor City Sweet Treats, because that was a huge highlight. And so we thank them because we could not do any of this alone. And we thank all of the families that came out from each one of those neighborhoods, um, to really join with us. Just celebrating community, celebrating a sense of belonging. We have a lot of other events coming up over the summer, like July twenty-second, the Jazz in the parking lot. We invite everyone to come out and join us. Our kindergarten roundups. I know it sounds like August, but August is right around the corner now. So, um, the Perry and Ford kindergarten roundups, we hear that, the, uh, English language, the dual immersion programs. People are still asking about it. They can still come. Then, um, the FACE Conference. We're looking forward to that Saturday, August twentieth. We'll start off with the FACE Conference and then go to the Back to School Bash for a whole day, fun-filled excitement, getting back to school. And our students come back August twenty-ninth. And I know we have a meeting in August. Just, that's something people just say, well, what is it? What's that date? We got to keep it in front of them. So many people are used to coming to school after Labor Day. And that we're being intentional, and I'm just inviting everyone else to be intentional about saying, let's, let's leave here early. We don't need to wait. That's part of what we're concerned about with the different calendars. We had two calendars. We've got to remind students, uh, every bit of, of time is important. So we want to just keep, we're intentionally reiterating it. Um, we do have some billboards going up, um, in the community just reminding everyone to be grizzly, that, that sense of belonging, you belong here. You'll see it on all our billboards and, and as we are hiring staff, this staff, this work that our staff, um, is doing to share about hiring, uh, those hard-to-feel spaces or grow your own. This summer, that's what it's about, is building that capacity. I think, um, today, looking at opening day, I'm just going to put a nugget. It's going to be so exciting. And I'm talking about opening day for staff. We usually go in the auditorium and it's, it's, it's cheerful, but there's a lot of talking and things. We're going to take this outside. We're going to move it into a family, like family reunion type style and really welcome our staff back. That, you keep hearing, it's been a, it, it was a challenging year. I played a song, I played a song today and I said, I got that feeling. Like, because I want, like, we got to have that feeling. We got to put out that energy that this is going to be a different year. Yes, it's, it's going to still be challenging. We got the energy you saw today to do the work. And we are ready to, we are ready as July one, we started the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And there is a lot of great things happening and the best is still yet to come. And we're going to start off the year in a tremendous way. Grizzly Learning Camp is going well. I know they had a hiatus last week for families to take, but they're coming. They already came back, ready to go. And I just want to thank those staff members, thank the staff members for the extended school year with all our students who receive extra services. Um, the work continues. And if not from this up here, is all that's happening. Um, and I just appreciate the board listening to the staff. They, they've come and bring ideas and you take. They, they've come and bring ideas, and you take risks. And we just thank you for all the support. That's all staff members keep saying, is thank you for the support. They feel like they can fail forward. They can try new things. They can't, they know that they're supported. And that is something that does, that's special for YPSY, community schools. And we could not do that without your support, because people will be afraid to take that risk. And when they take risks, it's on behalf of students, not on behalf of adults. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Ross. I just wanted to say to you and Ms. Haynes and the administrative team and all the staff and people for everything that went into planning this board retreat for, for us. It is a robust agenda. And it's exciting to be able to come together and get, talk about some of the work that we've been talking about here. So thank you for that. And this is like, I meant to say this at our last meeting, we weren't quite out of the end of the school year yet, or maybe we were. But I did just want to make a note that, and it's been on my mind to say this, particularly because I have such a connection with, because my students do a lot of, you know, they are interns and they serve at the middle school. But I just wanted to make a note just to say, it has been a very challenging year. And just being in the middle school this year, back, back person, I don't know if any board member has had a chance in that building, but I've been at the building over the years. And when I tell you, it is absolutely night and day in terms of the energy, in terms of the space, in terms of the learning that I see happening. I would be remiss, now that the school year has officially closed, not to acknowledge and say a huge thing. We know our middle school is one of our, and all of our buildings are important. We know the middle school program, as we transitioned to high school, that is a really important program in our district. And I just wanted to say that Ms. Neil has come into this district, she came in independent and hit. And, you know, shut down for two years, then she came back. But she has done a tremendous job, and I know she has a phenomenal team behind her, or not behind her, alongside her, to make sure that that middle school, there is learning happening, there is engagement. I love being in that space. I always have, I love this age group. But just the energy and the work and the dedication and the commitment of the team and to see how the students are engaged in that building is absolutely amazing. So I wish that Ms. Neil is here, so I'm going to just say personally, but I just wanted to say that now that the school year has officially closed, how much work it was, I know, to get to that point. So I just wanted to acknowledge and say that. And that is not to say that every other building across our district is not doing amazing work, but specifically, we hear a lot about our middle school, and I wanted to make sure we point out and highlight and lift up the good things that are happening in that we see at our middle school. That's all I got. Anything else?
We had a rain day in the previous year. I don't know if it's going on, I'm looking, deferring to Dr. Lopez who have been going to the committee meetings.
Definitely, it's not, I mean, rain day, but yeah, assuming. You know, Karen is always out there saying, so.
Put that in the U.S.
There's not really a cheap question at that time of the year, or really often, but it's a good plan. I'll ask you, you know, it's, I skipped a couple of them last meeting, but they always like to start. So I'll ask you, I, I hear the designs that, you know, that we thought of the back to school bash.
You've got to plan out. All right, anything else else in order? All right, if not, we adjourn at eight P.M.